I want to welcome everyone tonight. It's 6:00 PM and we are going to formally open our public hearing about our budget. As of now, we haven't had anyone sign up to address the board. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address the board about the budget? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Okay, and begin.
One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we always have a public comment period at our board meetings and we always love to hear from anyone who would like to come and talk to the board. And we have one person signed up. Is that Savannah Lund Rowley? Is it Savannah?
It's Savannah.
Okay, welcome Savannah.
Thank you. Hello, thank you to the Davis School District School Board Superintendent and those present for your time. My name is Savannah Lund Rowley. I got married just over a week ago and I'm still getting used to the Rowley part. I've taught language arts at North Layton Junior High for over five years and I currently teach ninth grade English and secondary literacy intervention for seventh graders. I recently won the Excellence in Education Award for my eighth grader's performance on the 2024 RISE test and I'm currently working with district leaders to improve the secondary literacy curriculum for next school year. While I love teaching all of my classes, my secondary literacy ones hold a very special place in my heart. For those of you who don't know, this class offers support for general education students who are significantly below reading level. I've worked with seventh grade students who start the school year at a first grade reading level. The growth that we are able to make during that school year can be life-changing for these students. It is such an empowering experience for me and my students when we can tackle the gaps in their reading skills and find success together. I'd love to celebrate the work that Davis School District is doing in supporting secondary students with their literacy needs. Many school districts simply assume that students know how to read fluently by the time they make it to secondary school. Davis School District currently leads the nation in recognizing that secondary students have gaps and that we need research-backed methods to support them. Not only do students in the secondary literacy class make huge strides in their learning, but they have fun doing it as well. If you would ever like to see engaging literacy learning happening, stop by my classroom during the school year. By second semester, my students will be able to teach you about how English is a morpho-phonemic language and the rules of schwa pronunciation. They love visitors and are always proud to show off their literacy skills. Thank you again for your time and your commitment to Davis School District students.
Thank you Ms. Rowley. I neglected to read the rules, but you follow them all. So, so thank you. Okay, it's time for some board recognitions and first of all, I want to turn some time over to Ms. Barbara Smith, who is very familiar with the school district and this boardroom. So, we want to welcome Barbara. She has an award to give tonight and I'll let her introduce that and you'll recognize that guy next to her.
Yes. I am very excited to be here. It's just fun to see all your faces. How are you doing? I just want to say hi to all of you. So, since I left the board, I've been involved with the nonprofit called Resilient You as a volunteer and we're an organization that helps hopefully teach young children resilience. That's when you really need to learn them, so you've got them before you become a teenager. And we do it through music. But one of the things we really believe in is the strength of educators in our state and just the brilliant job that they do helping our students in every single facet of their education. And so, we hold an education tribute award, I guess contest. We send out, we send out applications and people nominate secondary teachers, elementary teachers. We have a volunteer organization, a support personnel, like your counselors and nurses. We do administrators and then we actually have them nominate an elementary school and a secondary school. This is a statewide competition. Applications go all around. We've had winners from San Juan School District and from Grand School District and from Logan from all over. But I'm very excited because this year, one of Davis's administrators was chosen as the Utah Education Tribute Award Outstanding Administrator. And so, I'd like to introduce, who you all know, Robbie Kinghorn. I was so excited to be able to give this to him. He's, and he was nominated because of all the work he did in your community schools. And the application that Sherri Lamb wrote was very complimentary. He just talked about all of the programs that he has started, how supportive he was of students, not just students, but teachers and everyone that was in the communities and the parents that were in the community schools program. I was involved when we first started community schools and what just a superb link that that was needed for the connection between the school and the community at the time. And he's taken that vision even farther, so I really, really believe in that. And one of the statements that Sherri made in the application that really is the walk we, the walk that we talk and what we really believe, and that is that struggles are not roadblocks, struggles are not the end, they're just, they're not roadblocks, they're just a step to the next thing you're going to do. And that's what we need to have our students and our children and our parents understand, yes, we have struggles, you know, but they are not a roadblock. They can be a stepping stone to something that you want to do, that you have envisioned happening in your life. And that's the lesson that we want everyone in the district to learn, so that they are resilient and they know that they can go on. And that's what this is all about. So, I would like to give this award to Robbie Kinghorn for all that he did for Davis School District. We are so appreciative of him sharing his talents with the program and all the parents and teachers and students of those community schools are better off because of the influence that he had. Congratulations.
On behalf of the board in Davis School District, we are grateful for all the amazing work that Mr. Kinghorn did and want to congratulate him on this award. Grateful for Barbara Smith and all the great work that she's done in our district. Thank you for being here tonight. Okay, we have some retirements coming up and it's with mixed emotions that we talk about these. And I'm going to give the time to our Vice President Emily Price to talk about a couple of those retirements.
Turn my microphone on. I am going to recognize Mr. Dave Tanner and Mr. Rick Astle. And I just want to say that both of you have been such an incredible influence and asset to the Davis School District. We're so grateful for your expertise, for just all that you've done. I'm going to recognize you each individually and you can just see the amount of time that they've spent in their lifetime devoted to public education and to students. And we're just, we're going to miss you, but we're so happy for this new adventure. I can see that both of you, that your wives are with you. And so, I think what we'll do is I'll start with Mr. Dave Tanner. Why don't you come up and introduce your wife too?
Lover.
Yeah, yes, yes. You've been along on this ride all this time too.
Yes, she has. Thank goodness. So, yeah, my incredible wife Kristy and anyway.
Okay, well, I just want to say, and most of you probably already know this, but Dave Tanner, he has spent the last 29 years as an administrator. Is that correct?
So.
That's what the, that's what the DSD website told me.
That would be accurate.
29 years as an administrator, but you taught before that. And so, your career is, it's actually longer than the 29 years, but just in administration. He worked at Layton High School as an intern, Syracuse Junior as an assistant principal, Mill Creek Junior High and Central Davis Junior High as a principal. And you've been a secondary school director for the last 11 years. And just the impact that you've had on students and on the district, we're just forever grateful and we thank you for all that you've done and for your excellent career. And I've got a little plant and a little token of our appreciation and you can always remember us at Davis School District.
Awesome, thank you.
Should I just take it down to him? How do we want to do this?
While you're doing that, if I could, if I could take a personal indulgence while you're handing that off. I've known, I've known Dave a long time and when I, when I became a school director, sometimes we kept each other sane. I had, I had no idea what I was doing. I knew how to be a good school principal. I didn't know what it meant to be a great school director. And something that I love about Dave, and he shuns this, he shuns this label, we call him a maverick, because I think maybe it was, it was used as a criticism at some point in his career, I don't know, because he always, he always shuns that. But, but Dave is an innovative mind and he falls in love with ideas. I fall in love with ideas. What Dave does really well is brings them to fruition. He chases them and he's not afraid to try new things. Almost everything we talk about, he's like, oh yeah, I did that when I was, when I was a math teacher 30 years ago and I put kids on computers and some of those things. I've been a partner and a witness to much of the innovation and it's been, he's just been an incredible partner and someone that I really hung on to and relied on for several years when I became a district director. So, really grateful for you, Dave.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to recognize Rick Astle and if he wants to come up with his wife and introduce her.
Okay, this is my wife Crystal.
All right. Thank you, Crystal. So, Rick, he has spent the last 33 years as an administrator. And then, how, how long did you teach?
Six.
Six years before, okay. So, almost a 40-year career. That's amazing. So, Rick, he was an assistant principal at Bountiful High, a principal at North Layton Junior High, Bountiful High School and Layton High School. And something that I think is really interesting that Rick has told me, that when he was principal at Layton High, he was able to be there when all of his kids were there. And I think that that's such a treat to be able, as a parent, to be able to be at the same school as your children. And I'm sure that they maybe loved it and maybe there were times when they didn't, but I just think that that's amazing. And he has been a secondary school director for the last 25 years and 25?
Five.
Five? Okay.
I'm old, but I'm not.
All right, because I looked at, I looked at what was on the DSD and I'm, okay, I did my math wrong. Okay, five years. I was like, wow, 25 years, that is a long time.
Well, you're aging me, I said, oh.
Okay, I'm sorry. Thanks for correcting me on that because, yeah, I did the math wrong. So, but Rick, thank you so much. It has been a pleasure working with you the last few years. You're just a wealth of knowledge and experience and we're grateful for all that you've done for the school district, for our students, and then just administration. Dan, do you want to add to that?
Can you believe it? I think the board, like, we purposely cut me out because you know how I am with these things. I'm not, I'm not good at these things and I'm trying to, I'm trying to keep it together. You know me, Rick. Something, something that I, a lot of you, a lot, I think a lot of you know this, Rick, Rick Astle's a legend in this district, so there's not much I can say about him that you don't know, but I'll tell you from a personal perspective, someone who was a young principal and looked up to Rick Astle, who is a true professional and also a lot of fun. When he became a school director and I got to work side by side with him, it was, it was a transition for all of us, but what an incredible blessing, an incredible important mentor in my life, someone that, that, that put his arm around me and said, you should apply to be the superintendent, someone that pushed me to make the decision to apply for this. How dare you, Rick? I don't know. But just someone who's, and I hesitate to use the word wise because we associate that with, we just call old people that are smart wise, but he's a wise person and he comes with wisdom and he brings the temperature down and he makes people feel better and he speaks the truth. So, just super grateful for you, Rick.
Okay. Rick, I do have something for you. Sorry.
And just so you know, we're going to come back up and do photos afterwards with all three of you, so don't leave yet. Yeah. Rick, is there anything that you would like to say? And then we'll ask Dave if he'd like to come back up.
You know, I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to be in the school district for 38 years. It's been a wonderful ride. You know, it's funny because I had, I hired Logan Toon. I had a student teach by the name of Danny Linford. You know, I mean, it's like, I am old. I probably need to move on these guys. You know, to the board, I know you know this, but I worked with a lot of people over the years. And Dan Linford is the best of the best. I just hope we recognize what we have in Dan Linford. He's a great superintendent and thank you for everything. Thanks.
Mr. Tanner, would you like to come up and say anything?
I'm just going to share one thing. They're kind of echo what Rick shared as well, but this district is great. It's been amazing to see this transformation. With the captain of the ship, Dan, at the helm and his co-pilots sitting right over here and soon to be Chadley and the new directors. The vision and the direction that the school's, the school district's heading is amazing. And so, thank you for trusting him, them, us, all these many years. And it's been 35 years in this district, a wonderful ride and I'll miss it. Been a blessing to be with kids, truly has. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. I just wanted to add how excited we are for both of you, but how much we'll miss you. I'm not good at this either, but the amount of good that both of you have done for children and families in this district can never be measured, so thank you. Okay, so, I'm already a mess and now it's time to recognize John Zerbakin. So, we're going to start, and then we're going to come up for photos afterwards, but we're going to start with an award for Mr. Zerbakin. I'm not sure if you know about this, but this is an honorary award presented by the Utah School Employees Association 2025, awarded in recognition of exemplary respect for and dedication to education support professionals by the USEA, Utah School Employees Association. And I want to read what Ms. Sherri Lamb wrote, who nominated you. If advocacy were a sport, John Zerbakin would have a trophy case full of gold medals. For years, John has been the steady voice and passionate heart on the negotiations team for education support professionals in Davis School District. Whether he's championing fair treatment or standing up for the unsung heroes of our schools, John does it with unmatched dedication and a smile that says, let's get this done. His love for students, immeasurable. His stories of going the extra mile, countless. John's influence is evident to all, whether through attentive listening or assertive advocacy. It's no surprise that John has been honored with the Utah School Employees Association Honorary Award. He's not just a supporter of education, he's a force of nature in it. Congratulations, John. Your ESP family is cheering loud and proud and your presence will be missed. Okay, we'll add that to your little pile here and we'll give that to you in a second. I can't believe this day is here. This is, this is something that we've been dreading a bit, but we're excited too. But it's going to be mixed emotions to say goodbye to all three of you, but, but we are excited for you. But this will be the last board meeting for all three of you. I don't know if you're sad about that, probably not. They're dancing back there and cheering, but we're sad about it. So, John will be retiring at the end of this month. There's so, so many good things to say about John. It will be impossible to cover all of them, just like the other two, but we'll, we'll attempt to name just a few. And I didn't have you come up with your family, but we'll do that after and see if you would like to say something. So, Mr. John Zerbakin is currently serving as an assistant superintendent. And prior to this, he has served as an outstanding principal at Holt Elementary, North Layton Junior High, assistant principal at Fairfield Junior High and North Davis Junior High. And I did not add up the year, so you can do that if you want. You know, there are programs in Davis School District that when I think of those programs, I think of John Zerbakin. They've been nurtured by him. Latinos in Action, Special Education, Adult Education, all the federal programs, Head Start, Title One, Equity, Health and Safety, and there are others. He has received numerous prestigious awards, including this most, most recent award that we just gave him, the Utah School Employees Association Award. John is an amazing educator, but just as important, or maybe more important, he is an amazing friend. Anyone, young or old, who has felt undervalued, disrespected, unloved or marginalized, John Zerbakin has been there for them. He is a friend to all. During the pandemic, John worked tirelessly to keep everyone safe and he kept working with very little sleep and I'm sure his family can attest to that. He was always here, first one here and doing the testing and he didn't sleep much. His efforts were Herculean during that pandemic and I don't know how we would have gone through that without his leadership, his calm demeanor and his hard work. A few years ago, I took a trip to Switzerland with my family. I insisted that we visit a certain village in the Swiss Alps called Hobkern, because John had told me that's where his family was from and I wanted to see it. And my kids kept saying, why are we going to Hobkern? And I said, you'll see, you'll see. So, when we got there, it was just a beautiful Swiss village in the Alps filled with beautiful, kind people. And I asked around about Zerbakens. So, when I mentioned, and they said it differently, yes, but when I mentioned the Zerbakin name, everyone there in that little village shared their admiration, their respect and their love for this family. John possesses those qualities associated with the Zerbakin name. John will be missed by all those who have had the privilege of working with him in Davis School District and by all those who are fortunate enough to have him as a friend. I will personally miss being able to go into his office and sit down and talk with him about anything and everything. So, John, thank you for all you've done for so many. Congratulations on your retirement. We will miss you, but we wish you the very, very best. So, if you would like to come up and introduce, now come on, introduce your family and then you are welcome to say anything you would like. See, what a great brother.
He's always been my little brother, even though, you know, we're all retirement age and taking social security. Gosh, I got nothing. Thank you for all the kind words, all too kind. I've been around the block a bit. I've been, I'm old. Worked in a lot of places and for all, for all my colleagues and friends back here, Davis is special. Davis is unique. I've worked in four different states, in small districts, rural districts and metropolitan districts. If you don't know what you have here, don't take what we have here for granted. Don't take for granted the fact that we care for each other on an intimate level in this district. That is not normal. That doesn't happen any other place I've ever been. Continue to cultivate what Davis School District is about. Don't let anyone tell you different. Don't let anyone tell you that this place isn't special, because if they're, if they say that, they haven't been anywhere or they're lying. I can't thank the board enough for the opportunity to be able to work in this district, this board and boards that came before you. I was just telling my brother how, Bridget, remember, it wasn't long ago, there were signs on those windows and 300 people out there and Blake turned the sprinklers on them. No, he did not turn the sprinklers. They came on time, but he got accused of it. And, you know, and we made it, we made it through, we can make it through that and you make it through anything. Again, thank you to my friends and colleagues. This is family. And I don't, this is family. And the scariest thing about retirement is now poor Ann's just stuck with me. And Matt will come golf while they're getting stuck being family. Thank you. I thank the world of you.
While, while Bridget's awarding things to John, I'm going to just take a moment of indulgence here. Some people don't know this, a few people do. When I, when I was appointed the superintendent, my first meeting with John was, he said, I understand you might want to pick your own team and I'm just letting you know, I won't be bothered at all if, if you ask me to step away. And he meant it. And I thought, hey, I thought that was the silliest thing I've ever heard because he's, you know, you're not going to let, you're not going to let a man like John Zerbakin walk away. And this, this district, I agree with everything that Bridget said. And it's such a critical time in our district. John was the person that every one of us turned to and relied on for. turned to and relied on for next steps. What do we do? Ann has probably diagnosed me personally like 100 times in the last three years, so thank you, Ann, for all that. John's our local medic. He's the one that keeps us healthy and reminds us and all those things. But what I've relied on John to do is to be the guy that truly reminds us why we do what we do. And whenever it gets really hot, and it gets hot, and it gets hard, we deal with big, difficult things that sometimes feel bigger than we are. John reminds us who we are and why we're here, and that tomorrow's going to come. And at the end of the day, and I say this a lot, you know, we're this, we're this large industry with thousands of employees. We're a top seven employer in the state of Utah. But, you know, I'm an English teacher, and that guy's a history teacher, and that guy's a math teacher, and we're teachers and we're educators running this amazing, beautiful district, but we still have to run it, and it's, and it can feel big. And John's been our guy, and we're going to have to, I've said this a lot, we're going to have to replace him in the aggregate. We're all going to have to do our part to make up for the loss that is John Zerbakan. But he reminds us what our core is and why we're here, and what's really important when everything's get hot and we start forgetting about that. So, thank you, John Zerbakan.
From their wives and their families, so thank you. I feel like we could end right there, but we won't. Okay, we will continue with our information items, and we have committee reports. And first on the agenda is the Davis Education Foundation Report by Ms. Emily Price.
Okay, well, I have more good things to share, so we're starting this meeting off in such a positive way. First off, the Davis Education Foundation was named Best Charity of Davis County, and we will receive the award on Friday, so congratulations, Jody, and your team on that one. On May 2nd, we awarded the Outstanding New Teacher Award, and congratulations to Kylie Blake from South Clearfield Elementary. And we want to thank Tanner Clinic and Young Caring for Young for investing and recognizing the newest, brightest, and up-and-coming stars in our district. And isn't that Rich Swanson's daughter? Is Rich out there? Okay, congratulations on your daughter being an outstanding educator. Let's see. On May 8th, we hosted the Unified Golf Clinics for more than 300 junior high athletes and peer leaders. And we want to thank Rich Day, the Rich Day Foundation, for making that possible, and a big thanks to Dustin Volk and his team at Valley View Golf Course. And on May 9th and 10th, the Catalyst Center hosted 300 for a Classic Mother's Day Tea, and this was a fundraiser for the Catalyst Center, and more than $10,000 was raised for that. On May 13th, the foundation partnered with the district to honor 45 educators and employees at our Best of Davis. And we want to thank Hogan Construction and Marathon Oil for providing cash awards for Best of Davis winners. On May 15th, we celebrated and honored our Teacher of the Year with a year lease from Young Kia. The award also included insurance for a year from Golden West Credit Union and gasoline for a year from Marathon. And so, we want to congratulate Holly Fisher on that. She is an elementary teacher at Lakeside, and we are honored to celebrate her. And I was excited that she won. I know her and know personally that she's an incredible educator. We concluded our year-long celebration of excellence in education. Forty educators were recognized and honored for their outstanding test and survey data. The best part of their award was the selection of a student for a scholarship. More than $10,000 in scholarships set up in my 529 accounts were made. And then, so thank you to Murdoch Family Foundation for supporting our teachers and students in that. And then, we're excited to announce that the foundation received a $1 million grant received from Intermountain Health for the expansion of career pathways at the Catalyst Center. And just some things to put on your calendar and to remind you of. So, tomorrow, June 4th, is the gala at the Centerville Megaplex, so hopefully you have already reserved your time for that. We have Child Spree on August 1st, and let me know if you need, if you would like to sign up for that, and I can have Jody's office send you the sign up for that. And then, we are doing a new Express Golf. It's a fundraising event on August 7th, and if you're interested in attending or participating, you can reach out to Jody or her staff on that. So, thank you so much, Jody and your team, and all the great things that are happening in our school district.
Thank you, Ms. Price. Okay, I am going to give my Davis Technical College report. A Board of Trustees meeting was held this past week, and in that meeting, the 2026 budget was approved, and we also had the opportunity to meet, and I was able to talk to a lot of the HOSA and Skills USA winners in areas like public speaking, welding, medical careers, and other areas, and some of those are our students. So, it was exciting to get to talk to them. Also, a groundbreaking was held last Thursday for the new CDL, Commercial Driver's License Driving Range, which is located at the Freeport Center. So, Davis School District was honored as a partner on this venture, because Davis School District donated the land for the driving range at the Freeport Center. And we received this amazing award that I left in my car, that I was going to bring in here to show you, because it's a big semi truck tire. It's a pretty cool award, so we'll have to find a good spot for that, Superintendent. And usually, when I've gone to groundbreakings, the ribbon is broken with a giant pair of scissors. For this groundbreaking, the ribbon on the driving range was broken by a giant semi truck. So, it was, it was a lot of fun, and it almost went off without a hitch. We had to do it twice, but it was really exciting. And all of us in this room benefit as we all use goods delivered by commercial truck drivers. So, this is going to be a really good thing, and we truly value the partnership that we have with Davis Technical College. Okay, time for board reports, and I can't remember which side we started on last time. And we'll go here with Elisa, but I also forgot to mention that Ms. Powell is out of town, and Ms. Barber had a last-minute emergency, so they couldn't, she couldn't be here tonight. So, we'll start with Ms. Mercer.
All right. It has been a great, fun month, so I went to the Latinos in Action graduation, which was so lovely. I loved being able to attend that. And what was especially exciting was talking about some of the mentoring that those students had done in the schools, and then two of the students were, received scholarships as future educators. So, they will have four-year scholarship, and hopefully we can hire them here in Davis District.
Yeah.
Four years. I went to the Excellence in Education deliveries to schools in my area, and I loved being able to be in the classroom with teachers while they were receiving, didn't even know they were receiving awards, but receiving awards, and their students seeing how amazing that was. I went to the Bountiful Elementary end-of-year review with their teachers, where they highlighted the successes that they had had during the year with their whole staff, and then celebrated the retirement of Sandra Zakowski, who had taught for many years and was, on a personal level, very influential for our family. So, I loved seeing that. And then, as well at Bountiful Elementary, the farewell to the building, which was amazing to see generations of people that came to see the school one last time before it is torn down. And it really reminded me that our schools are the keystone and the center of our communities. There were people who had three generations of students at that building, and people, one person that I met that came in from, was a student at Bountiful Elementary and had come in from Canada, where he served on a school board in Canada. So, that was fun. I also went to Foxborough Elementary, where they received this, they were certified as a One Kind Act Day School, which was lovely, and our First Lady Abby Cox came, and that was really fun to celebrate Foxborough and that achievement. One of our students from Bountiful High School, her name is May Johnson, received, was recognized on the Senate floor for being the National High Jump Champion, and that was really fun to go with her and celebrate with her family, and we had a lot of fun doing that. And then, most importantly this month has been graduations. I was able to attend graduations for Davis Connect, Bountiful High School, Woods Cross High School, Canyon Heights, and I, all of them touched me in different ways and were meaningful. I loved at Davis Connect that I could see the families that belonged to each graduate, and that was so wonderful. And Bountiful and Woods Cross, the pageantry of it was really fun and exciting to see the, all these students who have done so much work and their families, and think of the potential of what we have built here through this district is really amazing. And Canyon Heights was very special. I loved being able to celebrate with those classes, and it was divided up, so it was a little more intimate, which was lovely. And then, lastly, I have had a lot of fun this month reading Land Trust Plans, which I read 27 of them, and I am just so impressed that we, there is such an intimate way that families and parents can be involved in education, and the way that we spend our money, and the way that we focus our money, and just want to encourage parents that want to be involved in your community, step up and join your school community council. That is a wonderful way that as parents, we are able to be involved in decision-making in our schools. So, I loved, I had fun reading Land Trust Plans. So, that's my report.
Thank you. I just have four things I want to share really quick. Like Elisa said, there was graduation, and I have my, no, I can't think of the word. Programs, thank you. My programs here, they kind of mean something to me. I went to Farmington High, Layton, Clearfield, and Syracuse, and there is something special about being there at the graduation and getting to shake the hands of the graduates, even though they don't know who we are. Most of them, it's still wonderful to be there and to accept the students at Clearfield. So, I appreciate that opportunity. The next thing is I went to the Horizon Junior High Parent Meet and Greet, and I got this awesome t-shirt that they have now with their logo of the duck, right? Is that awesome? It was actually really well-attended. Emily was there as well, and there were a lot of excited parents and students, and it's on track to open, right? Like, I think that it's going to be open. The kids are going to be able to go to the school there. There might be a few places in the school that they can't go into quite yet, but it's opening this fall, so we're excited about that. I also got to go to the Best of Davis Awards, which, if you don't know, I think everyone here probably knows, but it's the Best of Davis. They're nominated by their peers and reviewed, and we award 15 elementary educators, 15 secondary educators, and 15 classified and support staff. So, if you think of all the employees we have, that it's a real honor to be picked for that award. So, that was wonderful to be there. And then, the last thing I wanted to mention is the Vista graduation, which I went to one of the nights, and it's one of my favorite things. And this year, a young man named Mikey Crainer won the, kind of the big award of the night. It's called the Nona Miller Award, and I actually know, I've actually known Mikey since he was a baby. He's a good family friend. And he has Down Syndrome and autism, and so he has a lot of challenges. But he won this award because of how much he was able to adapt to a new schedule. They mentioned that he tried a lot of new foods this year, improved some of his speech, and it was just wonderful to see, to see him and how much he's grown because of this wonderful program that we have in our district.
Thank you, Ms. Price. All right. As Ms. Hogan mentioned, I also attended the Horizon Junior High Meet and Greet, and it was wonderful to see the new staff. I saw a lot of familiar faces from the different junior highs around my area, and I think that with Mr. Brett Sims and the staff, our students are going to be in great hands at the new junior high. And then, I was also able to go on a tour of the junior high with Mr. Sims and with Jeannie, our architect, and it's going to be an amazing school. I think something that we can be really proud of as a district. And yeah, it should be open for school to start, maybe not the gym, but our learning spaces are going to be ready, and it's going to be great. I also was able to attend Best of Davis, and it's always just wonderful to be able to celebrate our teachers and our support staff, and the amazing work that they do, and just their dedication to our students. I also was able to attend the State Track Meet at BYU. My daughter competed, and I just want to shout out that she took eighth place in pole vault as a sophomore, so that was exciting. And then, I was able to just attend leadership meetings, committee meetings, and then, of course, graduations. And I was able to attend Vista and Davis Connect and Adult Education along with our high schools, and it's, each school is, it's just such a unique opportunity, and I am just so appreciative of the different things that we provide to our community in our district with Vista, Davis Connect, and Adult Education, along with our traditional high schools. And it was wonderful. along with our traditional high schools. And, um, it was wonderful to be able to celebrate with, um, the students of Leighton High, Clearfield High and Syracuse High. Um, graduation is just such an exciting time and I, our, I think our district does such a great job in preparing students for their next step, um, whether it's college or a career or, um, what other, other opportunities that they may take. But, um, I just wanna say thanks to, to all of you and, um, the part that you play in that to help our students to be successful. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Stevens.
Um, it has been a fun and busy time of year. I was able to attend some concerts. I went to the Bountiful Choir Concert, Bountiful High Choir, Choir Concert. Um, and also the Bountiful Elementary Open House. Uh, my mother-in-law went there and so we met there and walked through it together. And, uh, she bought a brick, uh, or reserved a brick and, uh, was really grateful for that opportunity. And, um, I'm grateful for, um, all those that put that on, cause it really was a great service to the community there. Um, also attended the ribbon cutting for the Davis High School Veterans Wall. And that was really, really neat. Um, especially because of the way it came about and just seeing the efforts of the students taking initiative and, um, making a difference in their community. And I think, um, it's just really, really inspiring to see that happen and to see them value those that have gone before them. And I think in those moments that as a school district, we can feel like we're doing something right. That those are the lessons we want our kids to have, that they, they come and they learn and then they contribute and participate. Um, I also really enjoyed, uh, attending the graduations. I feel like as much as that's a milestone moment for those seniors, it's also a time, um, where we can reflect on those milestone moments for us. And John mentioned that his first graduation was VHS, right? And your last one was also VHS.
Yeah.
And he has graduated. We have had some grad, older graduates from the whole school system, but it, they're just a good time to reflect. And also I really appreciated the speeches that were given by the students, um, that you do see how they're such great individuals and they are a reflection of their student population. And that is just really inspiring and, um, heartwarming and encouraging. Um, and I talked to a mom that she said, "I just was so weepy through graduation because this is my youngest child that's graduating." And I feel like that phase of my life is ending and I'm not going to know what's happening in my community anymore. And I felt like, you know, public schools have a bad rap, seems like right now, but we are community schools. We really are a place where, um, the values of the community and the parents care and they want to invest. And the teachers really do care about these kids and are invested in the community and a lot of times live in our communities. And it's just really fortunate. And we were just talking about how, um, fortunate we are to have this kind of an education here. Um, and I, oh, I also really enjoyed reading the Trust Lands Plans. I felt like that was really beneficial. And, um, there's some things that I felt like I'd like to go visit that school and see how they're doing that. And I'd like to go learn more about that program that they're doing. Um, and I'm grateful for the, their responsible, responsibility in the way they're utilizing their funds. And I feel like a lot of what they're doing align with the goals of our district, which is really great. So thank you for all the work that's happened with that too.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. So for my board report, a lot of these have been mentioned, but, uh, well, most of them are worth mentioning again. I, I agree with Ms. Stevens about, um, attending the Davis High, uh, Veterans Wall Program. That was very, very touching. And, uh, the devotion and care that those students showed to the veterans was amazing. Um, I also enjoyed the graduations. It's, it's a fun time of year. It's busy, but I was so impressed with the speeches of those young people and, um, and our great principals and, and the board members. They were just really enjoyable for me. And, um, these graduates are going to make a big impact wherever they go. So I wish them all the best. Um, I loved the One Kind Act a Day Award that, um, Foxborough Elementary received and hoping we can expand that to more schools in our district. Um, I was also able to attend, um, a concert of my granddaughters, which was held at the amphitheater. That was really fun. And a band concert for one of my grandsons at Centerville Junior. And then the playoffs in lacrosse and, uh, the track meets. It's been a, a fun month. Um, Best of Davis Awards were outstanding. So nice to be able to reward, um, our amazing educators and support personnel and, um, give them the recognition that, that they deserve. Um, I had the opportunity to attend a dinner, um, to recognize Denise Wilmore, who has been serving as the DEA President. And, uh, she's done a great job there. And just really, um, I'm grateful for the good relationship that we have, um, with the Davis Education Association. Um, Teacher of the Year, that was a fun day. Congratulations goes to Ms. Fisher. Um, I've also enjoyed reading the Trust Lands Plans. It, uh, it's eye-opening and it's fun to see what all the schools are doing. And just want to give a shout out to our, all of our parents and teachers and principals and the work that they put in, um, to serving on those community councils. We really appreciate and need the input from those community members on those community councils. So thank, thank everyone for the work there. I was able to attend Soup with the Soup for the Leighton Cluster. And that's always uplifting to look at these students, their challenges and watch how they progress through those challenges and make a difference in their schools. Um, let's see. Um, that's about it, I guess. Yeah, that's a lot. It was a crazy month. So wanna give some time to our Superintendent Linford to give his report.
Okay, thank you. It has been a busy month. I wanna, I wanna comment, uh, just quickly on, uh, our graduations. Uh, I, I always, I always have this kind of melancholy feeling with graduations. It's the end of something special. And sitting next to board members was neat. I sat next to Elisa and she was like, we were just kinda almost overwhelmed at how much is just in that room. And I thought that just start, the way she articulated, that was exactly how I was feeling. It's hard to watch all this walk away, but it's also just amazing and exciting to see them. And, uh, each of you were just wonderful with your, with your comments and your remarks at board meeting and, I mean, at the graduations representing the board. So appreciate, uh, your time and effort there. Appreciate my superintendency team and the, and our school directors who spent so many hours there in those days. And it is rewarding, but they are long days. I always say, I find out you're a special kinda out of shape when just shaking hands all day, you know, wears you out. Um, but it's, it's been incredible. Um, I wanted to just make a, a quick note before I turn some time over to, to Dr. Montero. Um, but our, our, we, we, we learned yesterday that the Sutherland Institute, um, they have a Partners in Learning Certificate they give. This is the first time they've done this. They give to districts that, uh, rewarding districts that have transparent and accountable websites that have, uh, their curriculum available to the public. And it's, it's a high standard. It's a high standard and, and really a higher standard than the, than the state expects and that, that, you know, uh, industry expects. But, um, I'm, I'm proud to say that, that we are one of those, the few districts that were recognized for that, thanks to, uh, Dr. Toon, Brett Singleton and their team for making sure that, uh, we have, uh, really accessible websites, that we're transparent, that we want, we want our parents to see the curriculum, cause we want them to help their kids with the curriculum. Uh, we're really, uh, we, we hope to be an open book there and to make it really accessible. So, um, and, and grateful for the high standards of the Sutherland Institute to, to help us have a benchmark for that. And, uh, so without further ado, Dr. Montero, if, if, if you're ready to go, we have, you know, he, given him the opportunity to, to introduce some people we're really excited about.
Good evening, President Gerard, number two school board. Hope everybody's doing well.
Listen, I gotta take a little personal privilege and acknowledge my own gratitude towards the folks we just honored. Um, I first met, uh, I first met Dave and Rick through our affiliation with the, uh, High School Athletic Association and then with the, uh, Association for Secondary School Principals, where they were very involved. They interviewed me for, for an award once and I, and I just asked Rick a second ago, "How come you didn't pick me for that award?" You know, you went with somebody else. And now in hindsight, I think they went with all the Davis people, you know? Um, but I still love them and I just think the world of those two. Uh, for, for me personally, they've been such good, uh, welcoming mentors as I've transitioned into Davis School District. I love them to pieces. Um, and will miss them. And John, I can't say enough about John. I would not be here in front of you today. I wouldn't be here in Davis without John's influence. And I, I told his brother that I, I don't think he quite, um, understands the impact that John has had, not just in, in our district, but across the state. And I have colleagues in Salt Lake City School District, Outplain School District, Provo School District, and they all speak of John with such high regard. And, um, you know, and we all think the world of him as well. You know, I know at home, he's just, you know, kind of a grumpy old guy, you know, but, you know, he's, he's incredible. He's incredible. Um, and, and this is actually really fitting in that I'm gonna be introducing to y'all new leadership in our Office of Equal Opportunity. And what's really fitting is that the folks I'm gonna be introducing to you actually look at John, look at Rick, look at Dave as mentors. And the sign of a healthy organization is when you can, uh, bring leaders and, and raise your own leaders and then bring them on as folks, you know, progress in, in their lives. So with, with that said, um, I wanna introduce, um, our new OEO Director, who is replacing our OEO Director, who is currently, is Darren still here? There's Darren. I gotta tell you real quick about Darren. Um, there's, uh, one of my favorite books is called Defining Moments. And it's a book that tells us the sort of narrative of organizations that face, uh, defining moments and, and choices that they make can either put the organization in one trajectory or another. And when we were hiring for Darren's position, we were at a, at a defining moment as an organization. And in hindsight, the more we look back, the more prominent that defining moment was. So it was so imperative that we hired the right person. And Darren was 1,000% the right leader that we needed in that position at the right time. And he brought, um, professionalism. He brought dignity to the conversation. He brought, uh, a sense of, uh, sort of okayness, right? Just knowing that things were gonna be okay, uh, under his leadership. I, I can't thank him enough, uh, for the value that he added, the temperament that he brought to the table. Um, and I'm very envious of him that he's going back home, right? Uh, to be, uh, continuing his leadership career, uh, in a place that raised him, uh, surrounded by family. But I did wanna take a moment to thank him for his service and ask you to join me in giving him a round of applause.
Can I maybe just incorporate on that? I wanna echo that too. And although, although Darren's not retiring, he's, he's going to, to serve another community, is really his home community. And they're, I, I don't think they even know how blessed they are that he's returning and that he's bringing what he's bringing back to that community. Um, but I wanna echo what, what Dr. Montero said. Uh, Darren, it, it was a, it was in the history of this district, one of the most pivotal, uh, hires. And I hate to even demote it to a hire, cause it's more than that. It was a, it was a calling. It was something that was so critical to us. In the history of this district, very, very few people, uh, have made that large of an impact in such a critical time and such a short amount of time. So bless you, Darren. We, we, we are blessed by you. Thank you.
Can I, can I just take a minute and, and say something about Darren? Um, you know, I have gotten to know Mr. Nash and, uh, he is such a great example, um, to all of us of just, he's, he's just so kind and, um, has, has just a calm way of saying things. He has a way of gathering people to him and, um, bringing the best out of people. So we know you're not retiring. We know someone else is gonna get to have you, but we're going to miss you a lot. But we're excited for you to get to go back home. Yeah. But thank you for all you've done.
Now, Ben's probably thinking, "Do you have to introduce me next after that?" Um, it takes us, you know, it ta, it takes a special person to follow a special leader. And I do feel we've been fortunate to, uh, be able to hire, um, Mr. Ben Hill as our, as our new Director of our Office of Equal Opportunity. So Ben, uh, joins us with, uh, tremendous experience. He's been a principal. He's been an assistant principal in the school district. Uh, he's worked in Davis. He's also worked outside of Davis. Uh, grew up in Boise, uh, harvesting potatoes. I just, I added the harvesting potatoes part. I'm not sure if he did or not, but, uh, you know, he's a, uh, he's a musician. Him and John, uh, are just, you know, remarkable. They're a duo that's, I don't know if it's worth paying for, but it's worth listening to. Um, and, uh, I absolutely love Ben. He's smart. He's thoughtful. And on that note, Ben, do you wanna introduce your family to the, to the team here, to the group?
And yes, please. Join us. Dr. Montero, Board, it's, it's a pleasure to be here and to introduce my family. And, uh, I'm extremely humbled and excited, um, to, to continue this work in the OEO. I'm gonna miss, uh, my dear friend Darren, as, as you all know, uh, cause we've been closer than, than, than two guys could be, you know? Um, so I do wanna introduce my family, who's wonderful enough to come here and support, uh, my wonderful wife, Holly, uh, Hill. And then, um, my kiddo, Audrey, um, who just graduated from Davis High and is going to the U in the, in the fall. And Amelia, who just finished eighth grade and started volunteering at the Davis County Library, cause she's into that. So, thank you, Board. I won't let you down.
And Tara, where is she? There she is. Uh, so we needed to replace Ben and we were so fortunate to hire Tara Best. And if you don't know Tara, you'll get to know her soon enough. She comes with a wealth of experience to, to this position. Um, she had, she was an elementary teacher, a literacy coach, has been a principal of a couple of schools. And the, the best thing about Tara, the minute we announced her hire, um, there was a resounding affirmation from her colleagues at the elementary level. They love her. They respect her. Um, they think the world of her as a leader. So we are really fortunate, right, to have a, a leader who's been in secondary and now a leader who's been, uh, at the elementary level to continue to the work that we're doing. And, um, if, uh, this morning, Superintendent Linford and I had the opportunity to present to superintendents from, uh, a lot of rural districts in, uh, Utah. And guess what the topic was? Guess what they wanted to learn about? Was the work that the OEO is doing about the leadership that it requires. And, um, I'm, I'm thankful for these two new leaders because they're gonna be able to continue to support that work. And, uh, please join me in welcoming Tara Best to our team. And Tara?
Good luck too. Hi, thank you all for having me here tonight. I'm so excited for this opportunity. Um, the one thing that's bittersweet for me is I've also worked with Darren very closely. And so it, this is like, it's hard to say goodbye. Um, but I would like to introduce you to someone you probably already know, but my husband, Healthy Life Sales Director, Tim Best, um, I brought with me and my biggest supporter. So anyway, thank you all.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Montero, and congratulations to Ms. Best and to Mr. Hill on their new positions. Grateful for all you do.
Okay, I understand that. Yes. Okay. If you don't want to stay, you can go have dinner instead. Okay. Thanks for being with us.
Okay. Um, Board, uh, we have, in front of us, the consent items. Are there any of these items that you would like to move off of consent? Okay. With that, I'm looking for a motion on our consent items.
I move to approve the consent items one through five.
I'll second that. Okay, we've had, um, a motion to approve the consent items one through five as presented. Um, motion by Ms. Hogan and seconded by Ms. Price. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. All right, we're moving on to our
Okay. All right, we're moving on to our business items. And we've talked about this quite a bit tonight. But Dr. Greg Wilkie is here, he's our Assessment Director, and he's going to talk about those trust lands, plan, plans?
Yes, President Gerard, Vice President Price, Superintendent Linford, Board members, Mr. Lefol. It's wonderful to be here with you tonight. As you've mentioned in your comments, tonight, we hope is a culmination of a year's worth of work from our councils. And I'm just here to answer any questions that you might have about the plans that you've read in the process, and we're hoping that the Board feels comfortable putting forth a motion to approve those plans so that we can submit those to the state for review.
Okay, while they're thinking if they have any questions, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Wilkie, and your team, for the great job that you do with these. You make it easy for us to review these, and we just appreciate all that you do. Board, do you have any questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve these?
I move to approve the TSSP land trust plans for the 2025-2026 school year.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Price to approve the TSSP land trust plans for the 2025-26 school year, and we have a second by Alisa Mercer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Wilkie.
Okay, you're going to be staying up here, I guess?
I thought you might want me to stay, just in case you have a question.
About, well, about the Mountain High School exemption?
Yes.
So we need to make a motion on that? Do you want to explain that to us?
Yeah, I can explain that a little bit.
Okay.
So the state land trust office requires us on an annual basis to vote as a board if there's any exemptions for community council for schools that may not have a community council. And due to the unique nature of Mountain High School with, you know, there's a lot of students coming in and out of the school, and the families that those students come from, or sometimes families that are not as involved in their student's education. And so it's very challenging for Mountain High to elect a community council and to also maintain with any sort of kind of regularity those council members. And so for the last few years, Mountain High School has had an advisory committee that's basically appointed, and if a member leaves, they can readily reappoint a member to provide some counsel and guidance to Mountain High as they make decisions regarding the land trust funds. The state does allow an exemption for schools that are kind of of a unique nature, and they ask the Board on an annual basis to approve an exemption for any schools in the district that they feel like meet that criteria for an exemption.
Okay, so on that advisory council, do you know what the makeup of that is? Is it similar to a council? Are there any parents on that?
There are parents on that, and it is similar to a council. It's simply a group of volunteers that are appointed by the administration there at Mountain High. And they meet, and they talk about objectives, goals, appropriate uses for the money, and those kinds of things. But it's just difficult for Mountain High to have any continuity on a council that's elected on a two-year term. So it provides them flexibility to be able to add members pretty regularly when they need to to that committee.
Got it. Okay, any other questions, Board?
No.
Nope. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to grant Mountain High School the exemption outlined in the State Board Rule R277-491-3 to distribute school land trust program funds without a school community council.
I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Mercer and a second by Ms. Price to grant Mountain High School the exemption outlined in State Board Rule R277-491-3 to distribute school land trust program funds without a school community council. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passes. Okay, it is time to give some time to Mr. Lefol on our final budget adoption.
Thank you, President. And before we vote, I just want to tell Jenny Manning how much we appreciate all the work that she's done. Steve Snow, as you know, retired May 1st, and that's kind of right in the middle of finalizing all the budget stuff. And Steve would say he gave Jenny the opportunity to learn. Jenny would say he said, "I'm retiring, you do it." But she's done a lot, and so has Nathan Lee, he's helped a lot with the budget this year. And so this is the graduation of the 24-25 budget, the last step in the process, in that we finalize all the revenues, all the expenditures that we think, we presented those in Board and Workshop just a little bit, a couple of weeks ago. So now we need a final motion from the Board accepting the final legal budget for the 24-25 school year.
Okay, I want to thank Mr. Lefol and Mr. Lee and Ms. Annie for your work on this. Anybody want to make a motion?
I move to approve the 2024-2025 final budget as presented.
Is there a second?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Hogan and a second by Ms. Mercer to approve the 2024-2025 final budget as presented. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, Mr. Anofrio is going to come talk to us about postpartum recovery and parental leave.
President, Superintendent, members of the Board, this is our second reading. There has not been any changes. We recommend that you pass on final. It will not be effective until July 1st.
July 1st, okay. Are there any questions, Board, about this? We have talked about this before. Okay, if not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve 2HR-209 postpartum recovery and parental leave on second and final reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Price made the motion, seconded by Ms. Stevens, to approve 2HR-209 postpartum recovery and parental leave on second and final reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion passed. Thank you, Mr. Anofrio. Okay, Dr. Tune, you're on.
Thank you, President Gerard, Vice President Price, and Board members. Last month in Workshop, Mr. TJ Strain presented the Focus Graduation Pathway Plan, which is required by the State Board of Education as part of the focus graduation requirements they set forth in the state rule. And it's my hope today to receive, to hear a motion and approval from the Board.
Okay, any questions?
You go ahead.
Ms. Hogan?
Okay, so my first question is, are we required to adopt this? Or is this just one of the options that the State Board has presented that we can use?
It's an optional way for us to generate, for students to generate credits, it's not required.
Okay.
Okay.
I actually have a comment, not a question. I just wanted to thank Director Marcy Flocken, who is here, who brought this change from the Utah School Board to our attention and helped push this forward. She's been an advocate for people, for students who are behind in their credits, and has worked really hard to help them reach graduation. So just wanted to formally recognize that.
Well-deserved recognition, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hogan?
So I have some concerns and questions. I kind of wanted, was hoping for a discussion with the Board. Should I go ahead with that now?
Yeah, go ahead with what you want to say.
So I am proposing, I would prefer, I would feel more comfortable if we postponed the consideration of this program, just so we have more time to consider all the ramifications of it. A few of the concerns I have, and I think there's others that share these concerns, are our high schools already have several programs and pathways to help the students that have credit deficiencies. And I worry a little bit about this watering down the integrity of our diploma. And also a concern that it might disincentivize some students to go the traditional route of attending class. And that the prep course and then the testing doesn't substitute for the learning and growth that occurs in, say, a year-long English class. And also considering the students that do struggle through those math classes for the full three years. I don't know, I just would like more time to consider it, and also to see what other school districts decide to do with this, and some of the effects that might happen that we're not really thinking about quite yet. So that would be my consideration, is to just postpone and consider it for a little bit longer. Give us a little bit more time.
Okay, do you want to take a second, and do you have any comments on those concerns, while others might be thinking about?
We can, I think that each of those concerns is going to be a discussion in and of itself. I'm not prepared to answer those concerns right now. I do know that this is a competency-based credit generation that is authorized by the state and would anticipate that other districts are going to adopt it. It's not replacing, but will be side by side with our current competency-based credit initiatives, which are based on, we have a demonstrated competency path. And then we also have kind of an independent study path that students generate credit from right now, and this would just be an enhancement to that. The other questions about anticipated effect on incentives for course completion, things like that, we're not prepared to answer those right now.
Okay, thank you.
I will speak to the question of the delay.
Okay.
We don't necessarily have a timeline for this.
Okay, I thought so.
So we can accept the, the Board can accept the plan whenever the Board accepts the plan. Because the schools would need to build a prep course as part of their implementation, we'd need to do that at some point, hopefully before the school year begins.
Yes, to give them some time, so.
But even if it's after that, we can still do that. It's just a matter of rolling that course out, it's going to be a little bit trickier after the school year starts.
Okay, okay. Board, any other questions or concerns?
I don't have a concern, but I feel like something that, to me, helps to keep the credibility and some of the concerns that you have about it. I feel like the, one of the requirements that is outlined is that they have to remain enrolled in school through the program. So as, they can only enter it as a junior, or senior, senior, excuse me, as I understand it. And they need to be enrolled in school that entire time, which would mean they need to be attending school in order to graduate. And I think it does allow for some kids that maybe have taken a different path in education to become involved in public education and graduate that way. And so I don't, I don't feel that it necessarily waters down their education, especially seeing the tests that they'll have to take, and that they will continue to, you know, at that point in their life, that they will have to decide, I'm still, I'm going to be enrolled, and I'm going to be attending school. They can't drop off the edge and then be like, the last three months of school, I really want to get my diploma, so can I take the test and be okay?
Thank you for that. I was going to add my comment similar to Ms. Stevens. I like the fact that they have to be in school, and I felt like the testing seemed rigorous. And I just, when I saw this, I felt like it was, and since they had to be juniors, that it was kind of a second chance for those that maybe had dragged their feet, who had maybe had some, I don't know, issues in their life, or had not decided in the direction they wanted to go, but who now say, hey, help me, I want to do this now. So I didn't really feel like it was watering down the diploma. Any other comments?
I just have a comment, too. It's my understanding that the, because they would have to take the GED tests, correct?
That's right.
And it's my understanding that those are difficult tests to take.
They are. I looked at the technical manual, I was reading the technical manual earlier today, in just anticipation of this, so I could respond to any questions that might come up in this vein. They're really comprehensive tests, and they're, they kind of have a scoring mechanism that generates levels of high school competency, and then they also have college competencies built in as well. Those competencies are recognized by employers and colleges around the country, and have been. I think frankly, if we were to look at our current demonstrated competency assessments, which are kind of teacher-created and teacher-led assessments, that don't have the background of all the assessment development and research that GED has, this will actually add rigor to the test for credit path that we have, just by virtue of the rigor that's built into the GED. It's still a test for credit path, right? And so that doesn't respond to the other question of whether that is acceptable. But our current path includes a test for credit that uses assessments that don't have the rigor that's built into the GED. They're long. It's like an ACT-type test experience, but a little bit broader in their scope, because they go back into some of the earlier concepts of high school, where ACT kind of focuses on that 11th grade up.
Okay, Ms. Mercer?
I'm wondering if Dr. Tune, you could address, this is familiar on what Ms. Stevens asked. Would this pathway help students that are coming from a non-traditional, like, homeschool or a private school background to be able to become students in junior year and show competency so that they can continue being students and graduate? Is there, is that, that's an application that this could be used in?
Yes, I think a very common application, frankly. There's a lot of students who come in after a period of homeschool, and one of the biggest challenges for those students is to verify their learning. And so many of them bring packets of work, or, you know, portfolios that they've developed and things. And we do have a formal review process for those to determine whether they're equivalent to credit. Having the national testing behind it would aid us in that process significantly.
Yeah, and I just wanted to add that with the rising number of alternative education students that we're having in our area, that that seems like a really good application of this process.
That's one of the hopes, is that this will help us preserve the integrity of that credit evaluation process when students do transition in.
Okay.
I would like to respond once everybody else.
Okay, okay. Anybody else have any comments, or Superintendent Linford, if you have a comment?
I appreciate, I've actually have kind of reviewed some of these concerns today, and educated myself in this space. And I think what Dr. Tune expressed is pretty accurate. And I shouldn't say pretty, like I'm judging. You know, he's so, so, reflects my understanding of it. I'm doubting my own accuracy and understanding of it, because I have not reviewed the GED in its current iteration. I know that, and I think what some of us, some of the concerns that we have about the GED is this kind of longstanding idea that a GED is a, you know, the good enough degree, kind of a, kind of a history there. But looking at the rigor associated with the GED, it probably is a higher standard than some of our competency exams, and certainly a higher standard than some of the quick credit opportunities that kids can get elsewhere. That said, it would not, it would not hurt us or our timeline to give it a month, or even two, to make sure we do a strong analysis, make sure we understand all the ramifications. Because I think we all feel in the same way, that we want this to be, we don't want this to diminish our graduation requirements. And this would be a full 27-credit Davis School District graduation requirement. So I, you know, it is, it is worth a robust conversation. This and probably some other elements of the way we look at our credits, knowing that we need to be responsive and adaptable as we are, our students do have other options, and we want to make sure that our options are accessible, but also have the rigor that we expect in our credits.
Can I add to that just a little bit, President? Is that okay?
Yes.
If this were a question of this pathway and four years of enrolled face-to-face teaching in a brick-and-mortar school, I wouldn't even stand here in support of it. This is, this is an option that goes with the other options that we have. The credit packets from organizations like the Northridge Learning Center or other independent study groups. or other independent study groups, homeschool options, test-for-credit options that are already ways for students to generate credit. This is adding to that arsenal and doing it in a school setting with the oversight of those school tutoring sites. And so that's where you're getting my support as an educator. If this were a question of, what's better, four years of brick-and-mortar literacy instruction, we just heard from one of our great literacy teachers, that's way better. And that's way what we want. This is what we do to make sure that kids can have a path to success when that's not an option.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Stevens, and then I'm going to give Ms. Hogan an opportunity. Having said all that, I think it's been a good discussion, and we can ask a few more questions and discuss a little further. I would be fine also to put it off a month if we want to put more time into studying it. Are there any other comments? Okay, Ms. Hogan, do you want to?
Okay, well, just a few things. It is correct that to go through this program, you have to be enrolled in attending the school at that time, the junior or senior year. But the purpose, I feel, if I understand it correctly, of this program is for those who are so far deficient that they can't use some of the other programs that we have, which means they probably have not been attending school in some of these core classes, their freshman and sophomore year. So that's my concern, that this is another way that students might think, I can, I can do this, have it in their back pocket of, I can just do this later. So I have concerns about that. I also just wanted some time to get some feedback from principals and others that would be enacting this pathway. And also with the prep course that they take to prepare for the test, that is just very specifically to help them pass the test. And I feel that that is, it's just a far cry, not a good substitute for what we're trying to encourage in our district. So maybe this is a program that we need. I know we have a lot of programs to help kids graduate. And so I would also just like clarification that this does fulfill a certain niche that we really need for students. So for those reasons, I would prefer if we had a little bit more time to understand the issue.
Okay. So I, if someone wants to make a motion and vote on it tonight, we can. Do we, I don't know that we need a motion to postpone it to the next meeting? Do we, Mr. Luffel?
We should have a motion, just so we have something addressed.
Just so we have that in the record, okay. Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Okay, well, I move that we postpone consideration of this motion or of approving the Focus Graduation Pathway, so we have time to consider all the ramifications.
Okay, is there a second for that?
Can we add that, a timeline to that, that we postpone it for a month?
Sure.
Is that okay? Can you say that?
Go ahead and restate.
Okay, no, that's fine. I move that we postpone consideration of the Focus Graduation Pathway until our next business meeting. So we have time to consider all the ramifications.
Okay, is there a second to that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so Ms. Hogan made the motion and seconded by Ms. Stevens that we postpone approval of the DSD's plan for Focus Graduation Pathway for a month till our July board meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Dr. Toon, for your work on this. We'll keep researching it. Okay, we've come to the end of our agenda, and it is necessary for us to go into a closed meeting for the purpose of personnel. And so, let's see, we need a motion on that, right? Yeah. Or do we just need the, yeah, we need a motion, and then for the approval, we'll do a voice vote. Is there a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into closed meeting to, to have to say why?
For the purpose of personnel. Yeah, okay, is there a second on that? Okay, so motion's been made by Ms. Stevens, seconded by Ms. Price, that we go into a closed meeting for the purpose of personnel. We'll take a voice vote on that. Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
I mean, yes?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Okay, thank you.